All right, I will call the Tuesday, June thirteenth meeting, board meeting to order. So we will do the roll call. And trustee Brandon, trustee McGregor, trustee Moore, trustee Radke, and trustee Saylor. Then we are going to stand and do the pledge of allegiance and then with a moment of silence. Thank you. When I have the motion to approve the consent in general. Someone.
Second.
Second by Radke. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Number five, public comment on agenda items. Does anybody have any public comment? Okay. I have nothing. Committee reports, airport commission.
First thing, we are down one commissioner. Town chairman Jeremy Eichorn resigned due to visit appointment change. And we're waiting for the town board to decide what they're gonna do as far who they're gonna appoint for the next town chairman. And by regulations, it has to be the head person or whom they designate from that board such as you did with the. We, our master plan is moving ahead. We have chosen our contractor. It's a local group from Wisconsin. The other two were out of state. And he is, the group has done some work for us in the past, so it should go along smoothly. And that's about it. Fuel sales were down somewhat last in April, rather, and that was, the weather wasn't all that good and the golfing looked not all that good. And so it has picked up back to probably a little above average. Questions?
When is the next meeting for that? When's the next meeting?
Second Thursday. We always meet first Thursday, but some of us had issues with it, so maybe it's on my phone. I think it's the eighth, maybe?
Okay.
It's on July? Second Thursday?
June?
You asked when the next meeting?
When the next meeting is, yeah.
Well, in July thirteenth.
Okay. Okay.
I got my hearing needs fixed, so I can't hear.
Anything else for the airport? Okay. Police and fire commission, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. We last met on May twenty-third. Discussed a fire applicant further by the name of Jordan Foose. Jordan was ultimately placed on an eligibility hire list pending a successful medical examination and a minor follow-up with Chief Drew on a secondary phase background check. We had hoped to swear him in tonight, actually. However, we can't find him. We, we, we think he's, he's maybe, he's a reservist. And we think he's maybe serving his, I think it's a two-week period sometime in the summer you gotta serve. So we think that's might, might be why we can't get a hold of him by phone or text or email. But we're, we got a guy on it and we're gonna get him in that medical exam and hopefully get him on the fire department soon. Additionally, we have two more applicants that are in the box currently in the chrono background phase. And we should receive a report from Chief Drew on that soon. And then we'll proceed with those two applicants. There was talk of possibly a third applicant, but Jim advises me, we haven't received that application yet. So we're hoping that still may come in. But so all good news for applications. Other than that, our next meeting will, is to be determined. And that's all I got.
Okay, any questions? For your minister? Okay, Public Works Committee.
Okay, Public Works met on May seventeenth. We discussed, summer help is all up and running. We have three summer help this year. The new lease sucker was put in service. The old one was sold. The heavy equipment's been well maintained and no foreseeable problems, which is good. If you haven't been around the village, the alleyways have been, last time I took a little bike ride, I see that two of the three alleyways were done and one was being prepared. I think it might be done at this point. So all that projects on the alleyways, which is good news for the people there. Also, the second street project, we had, that was going out to a contractor to propose, hopefully we can do that project next year. It's kind of a rough shape if you haven't been down there. And also, just that the flags were up on River Drive, so except for the holidays. Other than that, I don't have anything. I do have one motion. Any comments on my comments, I guess, first? We're seeing none. I do have a motion, and this motion is a resolution approving the village two thousand twenty-two compliance maintenance for the wastewater treatment plant and utilities. I like to present that motion. It's something that we do every year for compliance and it's number two zero two three dash fours. Anybody have any comments on that motion?
Second.
Oh, second, any discussion? Oh, well, you're, sorry, I guess you're the.
Okay, so you made the motion.
Yes.
Your second, okay, now, any discussion on it?
It's just administrative. We're, we're well in compliance, no issue. You can read it in your back of the, we do it every June.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's all I have.
Parks and Rec committee, trustee Zerflu. Trustee Zerflu. Parks and Rec.
Oh, did we meet? Yeah, we did, didn't we? Where am I? Any comments on the minutes? Because I have no comments to offer. I will not be there for RBD this month at all.
I guess I have just one for you. How did it go out in the park? Was it a nice evening?
It was a beautiful evening. We walked down by the lake and right upon and some kids were fishing, you know, it was a nice thing.
We'll have to try to make one of them.
Yeah, you have to try and make the next one because someone will be taking my place.
Anything else for parks? Okay, public safety.
Hey, let me find the minutes here. Public Safety had a very hearty meeting last Wednesday evening. Starting with the fire department report, the chief updated the committee with his progress and activities, and then we moved on to a discussion of the EMS budgets. FYI here, to understand the discussion, there'll be a forty percent increase in what we pay to the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department for ambulance service starting January twenty twenty-four. I think that's approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so the discussion followed regarding how efficiencies can be found within the first responders program here in Port to keep within the budget. Both Chief Warden and the committee had requests for numbers to help us in our discernment. This discussion hasn't been discussed in any other committee, so we're starting this discussion with the EMS representatives and Chief Warden at the table from the beginning. Asking for more information, how often does the Wisconsin Rapids ambulance service, how often they arrive before the Port Edwards fire first responder, excuse me, and we asked for those numbers and Bajiu did produce those numbers this week. Also about a reimbursement received from Wisconsin Rapids for each call that Port Edwards first responders assist them on the scene and the clerk will calculate the amounts for twenty twenty-two and twenty-three. So the committee did ask both Chief Warden and Matt Fletcher, who was in attendance to help provide us, the committee, with more numbers next month, as we also seek for more more numbers for our discernment, but that's as far as we went with the questions that we had. There was a discussion on Lexipol, both from the police and the, the fire department. It doesn't seem to have got lost in the minutes, but I'd like to go off the table just to ask Chief of Police Scott Drew, if he could comment on, maybe fill in for those who don't understand and articulate better than I, Lexipol.
Well, yeah, so if they go off table.
Anybody objected to that?
No.
Okay.
Cheers.
Yeah. So a short summary, Lexipol is basically a policy management system and for both fire and police, and actually I think they have a program for local governments as well. It's essentially a lump group of policies that are directed, you know, to the state of Wisconsin. I mean, they, they do it separately for each, each state, but it, it essentially tells us which are the most important policies to have. It gives us an avenue to be able to edit things to make them fit our agency while not changing the the intent of the, the policy. It is pushed out through the internet, so you can access it via phone, tablet, computer. You can add forms to it. It just kinda, for me, it's been very beneficial instead of taking a policy book, typing it out. You know, and having to, to come up with everything from scratch, it gives you the baseline of what needs to be and then allows you to, I guess, customize it to your apartment. I kinda have it if you're looking for it.
Yeah, yes. Chief Drew provided us with printouts of what it looks like, and I think we spent most of the time trying to understand how it works in the categories and the process. We didn't come up with any goals for Lexipol, but it was brought to our attention too that because of our membership in the League of Municipalities, we pretty much get fifty percent of that total back for, for being in that program. There was, let's see here. There was a respondent received by Chief Warden that we asked him to elaborate on and address, and one of the questions was the roles and responsibilities between himself and the chief. I, actually, that's an error, that should be administrator. And the consensus of the committee was that the organizational chart of the village as it is creates an operational supervisory role with the village administrator over all department heads. I think Chief Warden brought up some good questions that I think that we'll address with job descriptions in the upcoming months regarding maybe some gray areas that he had cited between department heads and the village administrator. And then also some recent concerns with expectations from the administrator that was communicated to him and some directives that we discussed as well. We we let Chief Warden elaborate on his correspondence, bringing up some issues of his from the fire department, two of which, what we focused on that were listed explicitly was regarding facial hair in the fire department and regarding alcohol at the fire department. And both state statutes were cited, as well as our village employee handbook as well, and we discussed what those said. And two hours and forty-six minutes, we were done. So I think that is the report.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I just have one comment, I guess, on the EMS. I understand that, you know, our proportion's gonna go up. I guess I would be interested in the number of calls for our service out of non-residence area, you know, not just the village, but to town of Cranmore, to the town of Saratoga, to the town of Seneca, I guess. And maybe consider that if we go, I don't know exactly, maybe this is naive that what the fire contract is, if it includes EMS. But fire, to me, would be just a fire contract, and if we have to do an EMS contract separately or if we charge, if our EMS go to Seneca, do we, can we charge those residents for the service? Just an idea. Something to think about, I guess, and I think it sounds like it's in the planning stage. We have talked about that. But just to maybe to reoccur some of the cost of our EMS going out for non-residents.
That specific thing was brought up, and Chief Warden does provide those numbers of calls to Cranmore and Seneca as well. So we do have those numbers.
Well, it's just a thought of maybe if we charge them for the EMS on a separate, and I'm not sure if that's something, and without looking at detailed contracts, I guess, without knowing what they're involved, and I'm sure that they're more involved than just this discussion, so just a thought.
Actually, if you don't mind. The number out of, out of Port Edwards proper is in the fifty percent range for all call, for most of our calls. So and we track that every month, and, and this month, at the end of June, I produce a report to the public safety that'll show the the six-month glide path. When it comes to contracts, contracts have just been historically based off the calculation of the the service area tied to millage, tied to the, the taxing rate. Not a fan of that. I've told chief, we need to change that model. The contracts are all signed, they're all paid this year, so we're locked in for this cycle. Definitely need to address not only EMS, but total fire coverage to our three contract providers or service providers, because they are getting a very, very good deal for the coverage and is not tied at all to the amount of calls. It's tied strictly to its coverage area and how many residents live in that coverage area and the, and tied to their, their tax rate. So we definitely need to discuss that as the chief. The chief handles the contracts. Administrator, I review them when they come back after negotiations, and in that review for this year as well as last year. And we need to change the model. We control the model. So we can go to an entity, our three folks out here, and tell them we are changing our model formula. And they can say no, but then there's no other providers. So.
It's something to consider in the future.
Anything else, Mr. Rick Gregory? Okay, playing property information and technology committee.
We met June sixth at Board Box. Some of the things that we discussed, we had on our agenda, discuss some possible action for chapter eight village ordinances. After going through some things, the committee decided it wasn't, we weren't prepared to move forward with the motion at this time. The committee would like to hear an update on the status of the planning for the roads for the Nepco Lake HOA communities. We'd like to wait to hear from the administrator an explanation of the thought process on the chapter eight. Do you wanna discuss or go into that now? We were like the way that chapter eight's laid out and where it spoke on the HOAs.
Oh, the the reasons where we would do a special assessment.
Yes.
So with the, with the having the real tax based on our resolution, we negated all special assessments. We left language in our village ordinance, because there are some times where special assessments will be required and very beneficial to the village. In those areas, HOAs are included because they're an entity that gathers funds for possibly the servicing of, of roads and other infrastructure that we would have to negotiate with and get refunded. Developers, if a developer comes here, buys a bunch of acreage, that's a, that's a developer's agreement with the village. So developers, we negate, we allow to do an assessment against the developer. So those are the, the two special areas. We left a, I wanna call it a gray category. And it's just the language of the, the ordinance that gives the village board, if something does not pass the the makes sense test between Public Works and the administrator, then this board has an ability to inject themselves. If someone here has four parcels in the village and wants to do something with the infrastructure, that would be something that would rise to a level that the village board would have to make a decision, positive or negative towards that person. So those are three categories. But everyone else is exempt from any special assessment when it comes to roads and stuff like that.
All right, we had so, and with that, we were hoping, and I don't know if you're prepared to, for an update on the roads and how that will relate to the Lake Nepco resident.
Nepco Lake, sure. So Nepco Lake. The roads are not to standard, but not at all. That's, that's been used as a point of contention. That's not an issue.
Not up to village standard.
Village standards based on our ordinances, yes. They're two feet shorter. Okay, so, but that's, that's fine. The bad part of that is we don't get state aid for those roads, three miles worth of roads. The state aid would come in into probably the three to five thousand dollar range, just for that, that leg of area. So to me, with the amount of our road state aid of a hundred and nine thousand, that's not, that's not an issue. The contract, as well as the HOAs, as well as the developer's agreement specifically says they're private. And the HOAs collect funds to continue repairing the roads through the developer. When the developer leaves, the HOAs assume that role. Our village attorney in Clover is working, Mr. Formella, he's working the language that we would have to inject into the HOAs if this board decides that the village wants to take over the responsibility of the roads. We would have to inject language into each eleven HOAs, and they would have to prove that the village is now responsible for the road networks and you guys cannot charge residents for roads per your HOA because they're paying taxes. That's gonna fix your roads. So we're waiting on that language. I just talked to Mr. Formella this week. He should have some language shortly. When it comes to that, he's working some, some issues concerning the district as well. So it's, it comes down to the agreement the village did nine years ago was to leave them private. And the HOAs continue maintaining them. They're in decent shape. They're probably gonna start need resurfacing of a, of some kind, be it a ceiling or a chip seal or a melon overlay in the next three to five years, just to keep them good. They're in a good condition. So the logic that, that I've been going down the road with is that we have the assessments to do resurfacing for all that road network over the next five years. It comes into the hundred fifty, two hundred fifty thousand dollar range to do all the roads as a village project. We will start gaining quarter of a million dollars plus in additional tax revenue once then the residents come back to us. And it, it, it comes down to weighing the services provided based on the taxes paid. That's what it comes down to, the way I look at it. That, because we would be doing the same over here if there was an area that came back to the village. So the logic is, there's no legal issues with accepting the roads back. We would just have to build into our village budgets and our public works budgets the, the maintenance of the roads. And we would have to clean up the language in the HOAs. The positive note we received is in the survey to create the Lake District that they surveyed all the HOAs. Over ninety-five percent of all those residents were fine with removing that language and having the village take care of it. So let's don't pay HOA fees for other things, but they were fine, and, and there was a few consenting voices saying, no, no, we want them to remain private. That's what we bought. As soon as we take them over, those signs come down, and anybody and their brother can use those roads. They use them now. All right, so I don't see that being an issue. It's not a gated community. It's not private. It's just labeled private. Over the years, I'm talking ten, fifteen, twenty years, if the village ever wants to invest financially to increase it by two feet, then we would get state aid for it. That could be a long-term project. Biggest problem with that is you're now doing easements on everyone's parcels. And that'd be an issue. Because we would have to come to an agreement with all those residents, two hundred plus of, I need to carve up another two feet, two feet plus a shoulder. And are you willing to give that up and then move it in a mailbox? That's, that's a bridge too far that we don't need to go down the road. I've never, pardon the pun. I've never discussed that with any residents over there, but if the, the, the lynch point is we want revenue from the state for these roads, that's the only way to get it, to get stated. So that's the thinking.
All right, so we also had a discuss, discussion and review chapter five, Fire Department, section five point one three regarding language on the athletic association. We did not have a motion at this time. Our village attorney is gonna be developing some language that will help clarify the relationship of the association being separate from the village and how that would look to clarify that. So unless you have anything new on that, Nick?
I don't at this time, but thank you for clarifying that it's village attorney, me, and not village attorney Formella, because I was a little confused for a second there. But that being the case, yes, it's something that I'll be working on and, and I think is appropriate to be looked at at the next. I guess, probably pit committee, but maybe public safety. I, I guess I'll take a look at it, maybe recommend one way or the other when the time comes. I expect that to be within a week or two at most.
All right, thanks, Nick. So we also had discuss and review chapter two, village boards, specifically referring to recorded meetings. Possible motion to approve the language change. So I will make that motion now to approve the language changes, two point oh six, foren six, foren C. All village meetings, to the extent possible and reasonably practical, will be recorded for the public use and the historical record. These will be archived on the village of Port Edwards YouTube page. And the village of Port Ed, with that address and posted on the village of, village website.
Second.
Motion by Brandon.
Like a history major should say.
Second by Zerflu, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Okay. The next thing we worked on is discussion and possible motion, which we did not take a motion at this time to have. We did come to a consensus to ask Nick to develop a donation policy for how we, the village would receive donations. And we also had conversation regarding Ripple Creek Apartments, the discussion and the motion to transfer that property to the management company, to Heartland. And at this time, we determined that we were not ready to take any action. And for our future agenda items, we have our donation policy. And for our future agenda items, we have our donation policy. Um update on Nepco transition planning, chapter eight and chapter one so far. And actually, what we didn't get in there is possibly chapter five point one three. And that's it for us.
Okay, any questions for Chairman Brendan? Okay, um at the committee.
Okay, uh we met on June eighth. Our main discussion was the employee handbook. Uh we went through some different pages that we felt uh changes may be necessary. And we have it on the next agenda for July third's meeting at three o'clock. And I spoke with the administrator, we'll clean up the language at that time. And hopefully uh in July's meeting come with a motion to have that updated. Um other than that, um we approved the bills and the monthly journal entries the previous month. And we did have one discussion and I have a motion. And I guess it's up for discussion and I'll make the motion. The motion is to approve an eight percent water rate increase for village water customers as of January one. Two thousand twenty-four. Uh the last rate increase was in two thousand eighteen. This motion is uh would be based on the PSC financial approval. And uh would be an average approximate. I guess just to clarify that, and it'd be about ten dollars a customer, forty dollars a year. So basically, by making this motion, it is to send it to the uh PSC. And there they could deny the increase or they could approve the increase. And the motion is to send it to the PSC for either approval or denial. So I make that motion.
Okay, motion by Red Key. Do I get a second? Second, second by Brendan, any further discussion on it?
Clarifying points, just to help out the discussion, it's really gonna be about five dollars per resident. We worst case it, it's gonna be a five dollar per billing cycle per resident, the average resident, obviously Erko's gonna pay a lot more. And someone out here may be paying a lot less. Uh it'll generate approximately five to ten thousand total revenue for the year in the village. That helps us with uh uh just the continued maintenance, we see there, we haven't raised it in many, many years. The state sends us a note when we're able to raise it. So every year we we wait, this year the state said you're eligible. Do you want to raise it? And they set the percentage based on their calculation, this is not our calculation. So they said this, because you haven't raised it, because of this these factors, we recommend that we will allow you to do an eight percent for this year. So that's our only option to go back, we either tell the state yes or no. If if we don't. We have control of our wastewater and we decided every other year, because we don't hit everybody every year. Uh we don't have that flexibility with our water, and if we miss the mark of trying to stay up to date with our funding of our water department. We're just gonna get in a bind when it come to major repairs. You understand, water is not just fixing the water plant. Anytime we do a street project here, we're tearing up water lines, the water department pays for that. We don't have a lot of, we have some money, we don't have a lot of money in our water infrastructure accounts. And this is a way we just keep that up to a relevant pace to to maintain the village infrastructure.
Just one clarifying point, so it was either you do the eight percent or nothing.
Um do we have a surplus in revenue right now? And those counts are how much, do we have a water right now?
Water account has about eight or some.
So are we gonna raise the rates just to raise them? Because they asked us that now is the window to raise them, or do we raise them because we need the revenue?
Well, we 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 have a, and we have a surplus now, but you gotta understand, we have two major projects that are coming down here that's gonna drive that up. Probably half of it next year, just next year. So if and if we'd miss the ability to try to fund that up, uh that's the issue.
Uh Colonel, having been here just three years, I suppose you can't answer this, what is the historical. Timeframe that the PSC offers for water, I defer to Diana.
Well, the eight percent increase they said is good until February of next year. And then, and actually, they they didn't contact us every year, it was simplified rate case. And the last several years, we were not eligible for this, this year we are. Based on the PSC report that the auditors filed.
Okay, so it's a bunch of things, it's not like every four years they're gonna offer it, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, so motion by Zerflu, second by Brendan. And I'll take the vote, all all in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Who made the motion on that matter, President?
Oh, London, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, um anything else?
Uh no, other than that, the July third at. No, July fifth at three o'clock will be our next meeting.
At three?
Yes.
So just for your awareness, the date in the packet is that right? Okay, okay, um planning permission did not meet, do you have anything, I'm gonna have anything on that?
Nothing, nothing on the near agenda for any problems.
Nepco Lake Transition Subcommittee.
Uh did not meet since March, our next meeting is twenty-one uh next week, twenty-one June at noon, it'll be on Zoom. And uh discussion points there will be uh roads, taxes, uh. Services provided by the village to the residents.
Um any unfinished business around the previous meeting?
Yes, Jeff, um I know, unless it's June something, we met and talked about questions for department heads as far as moving forward. As um Blaz's departure comes up, so just wondering where we're at on that.
Um yours is still the only one that I've gotten, so if we could, if I could get some more and then we can send that on to the department heads.
Because it's the goal to have that done before we meet next to discuss, so. Yeah, the reminder, if you have questions, come to get them in.
Okay, anything else for unfinished business? New business? Okay, um reports from village administrator.
Your packet's the monthly report, uh no, uh the only fluxes in our fire department, that number is plus or minus one. As you heard, there's a few more candidates in the the pipeline, so the fireman number may go up, but everyone else pretty much static. Uh payroll's on track, no issues there, dog park, I did not get a firm ribbon cutting, they had an event in June, but I don't think it was a ribbon cutting. Alley's are complete. The next big project will be down here, starting in mid-July, when we uh tear up the road here in the sidewalk and uh public works has a good plan for. Parking as well as access to all the buildings here while that goes on, that's probably gonna be a uh four-week process, we're gonna do it in stages. Uh so you can get full access to the uh store fronts here. No issues with uh safety, fire and police, so. I guess for clarification, I know when I when I was monitoring the uh the public safety meeting, the three. So the group knows, the three courses of action that are on the table to for public safety is from EMS. It's status quo, we just deal with it. It's increase it by twenty thousand dollars, the payroll, because that's what we need to pay for the current rate of EMS folks. And then there's option three is we negate it totally. Uh because we have an ambulance coverage. So those are the three COAs, the courses of actions that I that presented, and if there's a a hybrid one, we can discuss that in the next public safety. Village budget, no issues on track, we sent out the budget guidance for twenty twenty-four, staff meetings will start uh. Start up next week, I'll start getting some feedback from them and put that draft together for uh the first or first cutted budgets. Uh the biggest, the biggest update there is our shared revenue. Once the final vote comes in this week, it went back to the Senate. They increased everyone's uh to at least twenty percent, we were already at thirty-five percent, so we're not gonna get increased. They increased everyone's in the states, uh because there was there was a lot less than ten percent. Uh so right now, the number of our shared revenue is gonna be in the two fifty thou- two hundred fifty thousand dollar range. And uh and we get just shy of of uh one eighty, I believe. So we get a small bump, but it's a it's a decent bump. Uh and that will be tied to sales taxes moving forward, so unlike the past thirty years. Every year, the village will see a three to eight percent increase in shared revenue. Based on sales taxes of the state. So that's good, because then more is coming in every year, it's not static or going to the negative. There are some additional public safety and stuff like that uh money that's coming out, and we'll get more guidance on that for uh for our use. The Nepco Lake District meeting was on twelve June, it's a typo there, it was yesterday, last night. They did vote to approve funding for the uh the loans. So we may be in a timeframe here where they will be able to pay for the repair of the the weed cutters on their own, based on when they acquire funds. So we as a village uh will not need to to fund that out outright. Uh if they can get the loan cut in time, but we still have plans to do that. We did delay the weed cutter acceptance from the uh. The the developer, uh mainly just tied up to a uh a. Discussion between the lawyers of the legality and the paperwork to do a donation.
Didn't Port Edward reserve to our district board and say they take care of it? Only just once.
Uh we've cleaned out uh the parcel next door, two thirty-one and two forty-one, the large open parcel uh got the electrical fixed. So now there's lighting in there, the uh we're not doing any spending any money on HVAC and we got rid of all the remaining trash. So now the uh realtor is able to show it appropriately and we have one or two leads on someone wanting to buy the middle section there. Not the one next to El Cafe, because uh Fidel still wants that one. And we're working out the negotiation for when he can acquire that one, that'll take care of all those parcels there. And we're still working with Mission Coffee. Uh we're working to get the HVAC upgraded, that was our bill that we planned for. And once that's done, the plumbing is about ninety percent complete, once that done, I've received the plans, I will post them on our village webpage. I was uh, I was told I could by the Mission Coffee. So the residents can see the interior design of what it's gonna look like, it's very nice, very fancy. And uh I think it'll be a good s- good business inside the village. So we'll post that, take spin up some uh support for them. As they open, I don't see them opening just based on those fancy designs in the uh li- early fall. Till late fall, honestly, just because of the the extreme nature, what they wanna do inside there, not not on our part, on their part. We talked the uh waiting or rate increase were good, we talked the vibrant spaces. Still waiting on the approval of that fifty thousand dollar grant that will be for downtown here. Few that didn't make the cut, uh next Wednesday, I go to the joint review board with the TIF. So what I would offer that uh I would like to get consensus here, I don't need a motion, I would like to get consensus. Does the village want to continue the TIF? So I give these people a heads up. Because if we don't, they only meet once a year. And we'd be stuck till next June. So and these people are the county, the schools and the finance director. And uh if we tell them what's going on, then we have to do some legwork on our part, but then we can either continue the TIF. Or we're gonna end the TIF next year and cash out and get our money. So uh not gonna put anyone on the spot, but we've been having this ongoing discussion. And I would like to use the jar, the joint review board, to throw that out there, so they approve it. It gets in the minutes for the joint review board, so then when we have to submit our packet to the state. It's not an issue, because if we don't, the immediate reply from the state would be, you need to call a special jar, you need to get it approved on that type of stuff, and that's gonna be an issue. Any discussion on that before I move, I got a few more, unless you want me, I I think we need to close it.
Well, I was just going the other direction.
Well, you were going the other direction.
Well, that's based on a lot of things that the colonels were talking about too, I I just, I just. Think this should continue at least another year.
Okay, so again, to refresh, if we close it next fall. We get about a million and a quarter out, we have to spend by next fall, and we close it. If we don't close it, we can still spend a million and a quarter next year. But starting the end of next year, it goes into a five-year window where you can't touch any of the money. And it's gonna accrue about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. So at the end of that five-year period, there'll be a million and a quarter sitting in there. That at that time, five years from now, six years from now, we will get our thirty percent portion as tax rate. But the rest of the money goes to the schools, goes to the county, gets carved up. So it's either we wanna spend the money in a year. Or spend the money in a year and just let it sit for five more years, we can't do any projects, can't pull any money out, it just sits there. The only thing that we've been discussing as a board for three years now is, we do have an option using our local bank. That he will front us a portion of the the money we will get in five years. Next year, so we actually will have the money five years sooner. We're gonna get it either way. Next year or five years from now, our portion, which comes out to about four hundred K, four fifty. Tacked on to the million and a quarter we have to still spend. So we can get it either next year, that's if we leave it open. But that's gonna be a decision that we just need to. You need to tell me to shut her down or just let her roll and do a loan. It is a loan, it's not free money, so. So that's that's our options.
So just so I understand it, is if we leave it open, then we have to take the loan.
You don't have to.
You don't have to, but that would be an option, if we close it. We would spend it and not.
It's done.
It's done, it doesn't.
It's done, and starting. Next, the year after next, when it's closed. Everything there just gets back on the tax roll, and we just get regular revenue from taxes that everyone else gets. And that would end up, right now we get a quarter of a million for tax revenue every year for those parcels. So if we closed it and we just wanna put it back on the tax rolls, we would get thirty percent of a quarter of a million, just like we would do with every other parcel in the village. We still gonna get money either way, just depends on how big a money you wanna get.
Before fourteen August, you and I are gonna have to.
That's when the next meet the meeting is, the fourteenth of August or?
Well, next Wednesday. Now I could offer this, we don't need to make a hard decision, I can offer this, I can float the idea. Get them to get in the minutes to say village board errors is worth weighing their options. And then at least I have it on the record with the joint review board that we're in the discussion for final determination.
If no one's ready. Make final determination, I think maybe we we definitely do that, do that as a motion, so we make sure it's tracked and the. And not a consensus, but a concrete motion.
No, you're right, I see consensus before the meeting, that's all. So I will just float an idea that we're thinking, we're still thinking either way and get them to report it somewhere.
I think this chairman of the FD charter, that was serious discussion, I'm assuming.
Last last add-ons here, the memos to the Lions and the Athletic Association would be signed this week by the representatives. And that's just making a very clear designation of the utilization of village park property and. We are doing it pro bono and 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 so on, it's it's the memos you all have seen for the last few meetings there. So that they'll go to those organizations, then I'll bring them back to y'all for review. Uh with signatures there, we talked the Nepco Lake meeting, uh twenty-one June, we'll talk uh as a village. Budget guidance, and then we've received two applications that are working for the economic grant. Both businesses, I haven't got anything back, I've got interest from school, I got interest. From uh some uh organizations, but they haven't submitted anything, so uh these two have submitted some initial documentation. Asking for small amounts of money for facade improvements and stuff like that. Uh and uh you saw the the email discussion today. Uh packet was sent to the PSC based on your meeting last night, that is all I have.
Any questions for us?
So this is a clarification, we have sixteen firemen, not eighteen firemen. Um and then, I just a question on the major initiatives in the next thirty to sixty days, the DMI engagements. Where do we stand on that? Because the DMI engagement seems we've been on here for the last couple of years and not thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, we still, we still talk every Wednesday night. Yeah, I mean, we're still, we still talk every Wednesday night, uh, Wednesday afternoon, we still talk, uh, last week, uh, even, uh, while I was out. We had a phone call with Dominga and Joe Moore. They hired a project manager that's living here in Rapids now, that's gonna be physically overseeing the demolition. Uh, they are waiting on my approval of their demo permit. They asked, I need a few more documents to reapprove it. So they can start construction back here, uh, or demolition, continue demolition, uh, it was a, it was a firmer timeline. And some EPA things that they, they did not have in the packet. I'm not gonna let them slide this time, so they owe us that.
Did they give you a timeframe?
Well, the demolition company is ready to go in June. They're waiting on a demo permit. So as soon as they get me those two things, we can turn it green, they can get moving up there. Uh, it's American Demo out of Chicago, is who they're using. Uh, so I know we talked to their project manager, so, so we're good there. They've, they're, they have not brought any new interested parties to the table of utilization of, of the buildings. That's still in limbo to them. They're really focused on just continuing the demolition. And getting the area cleared up so they can figure out an idea.
Any movement or any update on the office building?
The computer center, the only interest recent has been a guy that wants to turn it into indoor storage units. Got climate-controlled storage units. He wouldn't change anything on the facade, so I wasn't, I was fine with that. Uh, but he would gut the inside and just make little shelters that you could pull in there. He owes me some schematics of what he can do. Um, the, the challenge we're gonna have with the office building is just the size and the, uh, asbestos issues there. Both sitting with the county. Uh, county is now in a, in an option where if any party offered a, a very substantially less number. They would probably take it to include the village. Now, we don't want it, but that may spur some developer to say, I get it for a dollar type stuff. Uh, and I'll talk to them tomorrow afternoon again.
Anything else, Eric? Anything else for you, Buzz?
No, that's it. Yeah, there's a memo in there from our dear Arvus or guy, just, he sent it out just for your reference.
You know, do you remember how many? We were harvesting and whatever.
Yeah, that was in the report I gave last month, I definitely, I definitely, he said that out last night.
Okay. Um, then report from the, there's treasure.
I'd like to ask for a motion to approve a class B beer and class B liquor retail license for VK Oil Inc. Amaco. At four twenty-one State Highway seventy-three, Nacusa, valid from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Zer Flu, second by Brandon. Any discussion on that? Okay, um, all in favor?
Alright, bye.
Any opposed?
And I'd also like to ask for a motion to approve operatives license for the following employees of VK Oil Inc. Amaco. Nathan Bogdan, Torrance Stankfire, Aaron Dean, Teagan Rogers, and Michelle Wohl. Valid from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Move, Buzzer Flu, second. Second, Brandon, any discussion?
I take it that these were background checked by the chief? Okay.
All pass.
All in favor? Any opposed?
And I'd also like to ask for a motion to approve a cigarette and tobacco products retail license for VK Oil Inc. Amaco. At four twenty-one State Highway seventy-three, Nacusa, valid from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So move.
Okay, motion by Zer Flu.
Second.
Second by Randy Key, any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed?
And I'd also like to ask for a motion to approve a class B beer and class B wine license for El Cafe, OLC, two twenty-one Market Avenue. Whatever, it's valid from July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So move. Move by Brandon, second.
I can't be first, I'll take second.
Second by Zer Flu, any discussion on it? All in favor?
Yeah, just today I thought of that we were awarded a seven hundred fifty dollar grant for the Gas Selection Commission to help pay for our express boat machine, so. How much is the express boat machine? Three thousand, but seven fifty was the max that were given us, so.
Okay, um. Down to trustee comments, anybody have anything?
I have actually a few comments.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, I'll begin.
Okay.
The first one is, I'd like to have a shout out to the Fireman's Athletic Association for great broads at the village. Uh, village, uh, village rummage sale. I had two of them, they're great, um. A shout out to Fidel and El Cafe, I had lunch there today. And I've had many, many things there over the last couple of months, never had a single bad meal. And I just wanna do a shout out, because I think that what we have there is just a gem and perhaps a hidden gem. That I hope that we don't take for granted. Um, the third thing was, uh, on the way over here, a shout out to the half-eaten. Pretzel that was stuffed in the window down there at the bake, and I thought to myself. Why put it there? There's a perfectly good trash can right over, and then I looked and I said, well, we don't have trash cans, so I'm gonna ask. Public Works to consider trash cans, which maybe wasn't an issue, but now that we have a restaurant, that would be something maybe to consider. I don't think he sells, uh, pretzels, or I don't know where it came from, but anyway. Still, but I just thought, you know, that's something that's missing up here, it's one or two trash cans. Uh, the last thing is, this actually goes back to the public safety report. And, and I, I made a grievous error, is the, the reason we had such a long meeting was actually. Uh, because we had a hearty discussion on the fire department's bylaws, which I forgot to mention. And we spent a good part of an hour going pretty much page by page. Uh, no, uh, serious things, we were just, um, asked a lot of questions, both, uh, chief warden and the. Committee, uh, had some questions, and so, uh, we couldn't bring it to the board for approval. But we think that one more month with it, as we send it back to the fire department and ask some legal questions and clean up some language. So, uh, I think it's well on its way for. Getting completed, so I forgot to mention that. That's it.
Alright, Eric.
Um, first off, I'd like to thank Buzz for posting the meeting videos. I know that a lot of people watch them, I should say a lot. But there's a quite a few people that watch them to try to stay involved. Um, thank you for that, Buzz. Um, but by saying that, I did watch the June seventh public safety meeting. And I feel that the fire chief asked a lot of questions and the direct, and asked for direction from the board. Um, or that committee, and answers were not given, and the testimony that was given in the meeting the other day. Kind of blindsides me now from the, the discussions that were had during that meeting on June seventh. So I don't know what happened between June seventh and June twelfth to, uh, submit. Uh, voted no confidence for the fire chief and to, uh, request the possible action on the PFC. For disciplinary actions, so that's all I have to say. And I would recommend that if any resident wants to watch those meetings, they can form their own opinions. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, our next Netho Lake District Board meeting will be right here on June nineteenth. At twelve thirty at one o'clock. So chance for anybody that would want to come down and see our work. And that's different, of course, than the transition group that Buzz leaves.
Anybody else have any trustee comments? Okay, um. We made the meeting calendar, obviously, uh, FHR, we've already had to adjust, but just chairman, make sure that you're confirming those dates and times. Um, and letting us all know.
And then can we just run down, because I'm gonna make sure we're good.
You're gonna make sure.
So, uh, what I would ask is that Lon, on twenty-one June, I'm actually gonna be in Pittsfield for the jar meeting. Is there any way you can go left or right on that?
Uh, the twenty-first.
Yeah, because I'll be in Pittsfield at, so it was a four, five, one, six. If you just make it a quick meeting, I can hang out here. Uh, it, it should be quick, they ain't got much on the agenda.
Yeah, I don't see it to be a really long meeting. I would say it's gonna be, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering with the equipment.
I'm sorry, I will leave.
Maybe just the trash cans that.
Four o'clock, uh, Parks and Rec, twenty-eight June here, four P M. You're not gonna be here.
M, MBC will be the location.
You, you good with it, Ms. Jen?
Yeah, that's the one we're going.
Twenty-eight June, Wednesday, four P M, okay, Pitt, five, July at four. FHR will be for us, five, July at three, so pre.
Yes, they definitely changed.
And public safety be five, July at five. So you only have an hour. Yeah, I'm asking.
Um.
Oh, we can't.
I thought we were at four.
Okay, so.
Is it four?
Yeah, there's two meetings on schedule. You guys wanna do three thirty on Pitt?
Well, we're at three o'clock in FHR, I don't.
Oh, there's three meetings in one day?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got three, if, if, if you guys are gonna have one hour meetings, understand you're gonna be, if you, one person goes over, you bump everybody.
Well, we're all, we're the same committee in Pitt and public safety, so.
Okay, so we're gonna start at three of finance, we're gonna go four to Pitt. And we're gonna go five to public safety, all on five July. You're all good with that?
I am good with it.
Okay, I'll update that, and then Netho Lake Transition is twenty-one June, that's here by Zoom in person. Uh, you, you, you all are invited, uh, but it's gonna be noticed anyway, so if you do attend. And then the next village board meeting, eleven July, seven o'clock. I'm gonna add the district meeting that the. Mr. Zer Flu brought up, chief. That's it, I'm good.
But, and then do you have, um. The, can we have the whole meeting, June twentieth? Right, June, yeah, June twentieth, four to six.
Four to six, June twentieth.
First, anything else for anybody? Without objection, I will adjourn the meeting at eight oh two.